Today's meeting, today's April fifteenth. It's a couple of minutes past seven P M. Welcome to the beautiful Sisson Gallery in the Mackenzie Fine Arts Center. I was here literally enjoying all this fine work. I'm so proud of our students. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee D'Ambrosio. Trustee McDonald. Trustee Moses.
Here.
Trustee Petrichoff.
Here.
Trustee Thor.
Here.
Trustee Watts here, Chair Barry.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees Meeting, regular Board of Trustees Meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty four, and Board of Trustees Building and Site Committee, April first, twenty twenty four. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So moved. I'll support.
Yes. Motion moved by Trustee Pet, uh, Trustee D'Ambrosio, supported by Trustee Petrichoff. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Student presentation.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and President Cavalluna.
Good evening.
Uh, if you don't know me, I'm Steve Glazer, faculty Chair for Fine Performing Arts. And first of all, I want to thank all of you for helping complete this project of having uh, this Sisson Gallery looking the way it does now as far as new walls, new floor, new ceiling, new lights. It's a big change from what it used to look like. And just a quick brag that I don't know how much you guys are aware of how we are sort of the envy of the other community college art programs in the area. We have transfer agreements for our AFA in Studio Art with both Eastern and Wayne. With Eastern at seventy-three credit hours on our campus, with Wayne at seventy-six hours on our campus. There's a reason for that that I could go into if you want, but I'm trying to be quick. We also have one sort of in the works. We're waiting on final legal approval with CCS. And then our graphic design program has with both the same with CCS and with Lawrence Technical Institute. As to the point where when McComb Community College was looking at trying to get something with CCS, CCS recommended that they copy our degree, our AFA in Studio Art. And so they, the person who's in my position, faculty chair over there, actually called me and asked, how did you do this? What did you do to get it to happen and stuff like that? And so we're real proud of what we have here. And yeah, we're in many ways just a step away from busting at the seams as far as our classes. During last semester, there was one time slot left that we could have actually put a studio class in this building. And beyond that, there, we were full. And I'd like to introduce my colleague, Vicky Shepherd, to say a couple of words about the graphic design program and a couple of students.
I think I just wanted to add that, um, because the last time the two students were sort of not totally sure where they were going. So I wanted to just mention that, um, well, Megan is transferring over to Wayne State and a good number of our students do transfer to Wayne State and then the others go on to freelance or look for careers. So we are typically a career program. So that's sort of explained some of the transfer agreements. We've had, I think, twenty-seven people graduate for the last three years in a row. So that's kind of a up from COVID. So that was pretty good, too. So, um, are we just introducing?
Well, we should say that a week from today.
Oh, a week from today. So tomorrow, all this is coming down. And on Thursday, the graduating art and design students are putting up their graduating show. So that is on Monday in here from four to eight, four to eight. So it's all our, just our graduating students will have their own little show. So you are all welcome to come to that. And it'll be up for a week.
Yes.
Okay.
Megan, before you start, please, one of the concerns that President Cavalluna and I had that when the student, during the student presentation, it might be intimidating to be this close to the president. So please be comfortable.
Well, that's okay.
And we're so looking forward to your presentation.
I do appreciate that.
Yes.
Uh, I do actually have two pieces in here. The veneer poster with the red and blue is mine. That is from Vicky's typography class last semester. And the Nike shoe behind James there is done in Steve's three-dimensional class this semester.
One shoe is real.
Yeah, one of those shoes is real. The other was made out of clay. So that was a very challenging project, but very fun. I myself am from Allen Park. I went to Allen Park High School. Upon graduating from there, I did actually go to Wayne State originally. Didn't really have a clear idea of what I wanted to go into. So kind of petered off of that and ended up dropping out of school, actually, for a, about a year and a half. I worked full-time at Rocket Mortgage doing sales. Found out I also didn't like sales either. So I decided to go back to school. And I obviously knew about Henry Ford, having grown up in Allen Park. The Ford family and, you know, their legacy transfers over to Allen Park as well. So something that kind of interested me about coming here was that it is a smaller school. One of the things that didn't make me want to go right back to Wayne State was the class size. It's kind of hard to have that one-on-one with, you know, your professors and get that sort of mentorship. So it's kind of why I decided to come here. Both Steve and Vicky have done tremendous jobs making themselves available for their students. I feel like personally, Steve's kind of touched on it a little bit. But another thing that did interest me in coming here was that this program does replicate and, you know, go hand in hand with a lot of the four-year colleges around here. So it did give me the opportunity to be able to kind of see where I would better fit, you know, upon graduating here. Like Vicky mentioned, I do plan on returning to Wayne State now in the fall and hopefully be able to complete my bachelor's degree in the next year and a half. I'm going to try to go full, full year. She did mention as well, I do currently work at a print shop in Gross Point. I'm a graphic designer there. I am also doing some freelance work for a couple of clients. So I feel like the program here has definitely equipped me with all of the tools I need to, you know, go out into the world. I don't even really feel like I need to, you know, complete my bachelor's degree. It's something I'm more so doing for myself. But I feel, you know, well-equipped to go out into the world and see, you know, where I end up. But that's my little personal spiel.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. I do appreciate that.
See, I don't think she's intimidated being.
No, no, you did a great job.
So I grew up with four older brothers.
She's calling us out now.
I definitely am not, no, not intimidated. But I do feel like, um, I, I got what I needed from coming here and I feel confident that going forward, I'm going to end up where I need to be, so.
That's a great thing to hear.
Thank you.
You can just introduce yourself.
My name is Jasmine. And, well, I grew up in southwest Detroit. I went to Western International High School and throughout high school, I went to a program called Swamp. And within that program, there was a teacher who happened to go to CCS. And she would always mention this program here in HFC. And that's why, one of the, that's one of the reasons why I got interested in coming here. And also growing up, I've always been involved in art. Growing up, I would see my uncle drawing. He would see anyone and like a day later, he would be drawing that same exact face, or building, or anything really. And that's one of the reasons why I started to veer towards art and art program. And yeah, I am a little nervous. Like I'm the oldest, so it's the first time that.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Something that I like about this school is the quality of, like, the professors that take the time, especially with Professor Glazer. Um, he has been very, very attentive to all his students, has taken the time staying over the time that he's. Well, beyond the time that he's, like, in the building here. Like, I came in a Sunday and he was here, um, with another student. And I just think that's very neat and very nice and very kind of a professor to do that. And yeah, um, just very thankful to also be here in front of all of you guys. Do we have a question? Oh, and, uh, I forgot to mention that my artwork is over there, a three-D art design. It's a boot and the chalice, I don't think it's next to it. Okay.
Beautiful. Trustee Petrichoff, you have a question?
Well, I just want, because not everybody might know what CCS is, Center for Creative Studies.
College.
College for.
Yeah.
Yeah, it used to be Center for.
When my daughter was graduating from that, so she very much wanted to go there until I saw the price tag. And she went here. Now, what I, and that's one of the things I wanted to bring up because we're hearing from the students here that they've heard about because the College for Creative Studies is fairly well-recognized in Detroit. But it, it is expensive unless you get some kind of scholarship or, or financing for it. Whereas coming here, and I'm so happy to hear that we are able to provide an ample program that is probably on par, I'm assuming, to what you may have for nowhere near the cost. So I just wanted everybody to be well-aware that, you know, of what it is that, that we're doing here. And I'm very proud to see that because I know Steve and I have had conversations in years past. You know, some of these programs, the smaller ones, struggle with surviving when, when they're not the most popular or highlighted. So I'm happy to hear that we still have this to offer and, and we're finding great success with it.
Yeah. And this professor, well, teacher, she was from CCS and she would always, like I said, really nail it down like, hey, HFC has art program all the time, every time we would be in that classroom, so.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention, too, we've actually had teachers in our program who also teach at CCS that teach here as well, so.
Hey, we're not above poaching.
We have a couple now that are also, they're adjuncts here in adjuncts at CCS.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Is Mike, is Mike's a little high on?
That's fine.
Um, hi, I'm Sadie. Uh, I graduated from Annapolis High School in Dearborn Heights in twenty twenty-one. When I was there, I served as a member of the Community and Cultural Relations Commission for the City of Dearborn Heights. Um, I was also a member of the Teen Arts Council at the Detroit Institute of Arts. Um, HFC was my first pick. It was the most financially accessible. It was close to home, so I can save on money while living at home. Um, and I also know that they had a pretty good program that had articulation agreements already with four-year schools nearby, which is exactly what I was looking for. I've gotten a really good experience out of going here. I can only echo what they've said about Steve. I mean, he's so great. He's beyond accommodating. Is, like, makes himself overly available, um, to the point where I'm like, maybe you might want to take a step back here. Get some rest. Professors like Ashley Berry have taken me under their wing and just really taught me so much about art. Before this, I went to really low-income school. So our art program was like a lot of the art programs across America, underfunded and not actually teaching anything. Just throwing kind of a piece of printer paper in front of you and going, oh, okay, do whatever, be creative. But here I've learned like a lot of technical skills and it's furthered my creative abilities. Um, and I'm just, I'm really glad that I went here. I've gotten a lot out of it. Oh, yeah, I was the first outside of Wayne State and CCS to receive the Detroit Society of Women Painters and Sculptors Scholarship as of last year. And I'm also a student worker here. I work as a gallery monitor, or not gallery monitor, studio monitor, sorry. We're in the gallery.
And your artwork?
Uh, I do have artwork. I have the chalice over there, the one with the little star on it. And then I have a, like, tower ceramic thing. Both of those were made in ceramics, one that I am currently taking with Steve.
All three of them will be part of the large graduating show next Monday.
Okay, great. Any questions? Trustee Moses?
Where did you say your plans?
Uh, Eastern.
Oh, you're at Eastern.
To get a four-year degree in sculpture.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, president's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary Trustees. Welcome to the Sisson Gallery. I am very proud of what we just saw and I want to underscore a few things. The first thing, um, that Sadie mentioned was Professor Glazer's persistence is also apparent in this, this room. I was with Steve and his, his students for this gallery exhibition, uh, two weeks ago?
Yes.
Two weeks ago. And, um, I was a little bit worried to come here because Steve had his idea of this gallery being renovated and then a little thing called the pandemic happened. And he really wanted it to get done. And I said, Steve, I, I just, I'm, I'm not sure we can spend that much money on a gallery that no one can be, be at. And he said, but people are going to be there and it's going to be, it's going to be great and you need to do it. And I, it probably was every three months, you and I had that interaction.
Me was the one.
Yeah, you, you were sending your emissaries. And, uh, you know, Steve is a great colleague and a friend. And when I, I came to that, um, exhibition, you know, he was very gracious and, you know, he could have said, I told you so, uh, because there was a lot of great art here and a lot of great students. And he, for those of you that weren't here before, Steve's vision for this took place in the last several months. This was not, this was not the kind of place you'd bring your Board of Trustees to see and hear students from. But it's, it's really that now. You can, you can get a sense of it. And for those that weren't able to see the exhibition that Steve put on two weeks ago, I encourage you to come and join me when we see the other exhibitions. He plans to bring more student art, but also more professional art. And it, it really does feel like an art gallery here. And it did take far longer than Steve wanted to get done. But I think we're both really happy with the outcome. And it is, it does feel good for, for me to bring you trustees to be with the students and the staff who, who work in this area and to be able to show off, um, the art at first, but then the product of the education that you support, which you just saw. It, it really is fantastic. So, um, thank you, Steve, for everything that you did. I know I see Vicky. I don't know if I see any other of your colleagues, but, um, there's one person that I know this wouldn't have happened without, and that's Dr. Nealon. He and I both, and I know Dr. Nealon's a good team player, so he probably never told you, uh, he was pushing on me along with you, but he was. And, and I, I think you should, um, when you get a chance, thank him also. Yes, yes. There were, there was a small army, Steve. And it, and it was great. And I'm glad, I'm glad that.
I ask nothing more than equestrian statue of me in the small. Very best arts.
Yeah, I was just going to say, go to the ceramics. We'll have, we'll have a real one.
That's coming out soon.
I was also really excited since the last time we met to, to join Dr. Nealon and Rhonda DeLonge and some others at Eastern Michigan University, where we announced the fourth transfer agreement under the Learn Forward moniker. Uh, I've sent you trustees some news and media that we got on behalf of that. It's, it's another great, exciting development that, uh, a, a full group of people worked on, but of course, at the tip of the spear on that was Dr. Nealon. And I was glad to have him there with me, uh, along with some others from Henry Ford College. Also, since the last time we were together, Reginald Best brought the Applebaum Foundation to come look at our, our Detroit Promise coaches and students. And we had a nice meal. We're, as you know, focusing on being the best place for Detroit Promise students to come. You may not know, but we've increased the number of students from the Detroit Promise who are graduating year over year over year, with a small hiccup right at the beginning of the pandemic. But other than that, uh, we've gone up every year and we've done better than any other two-year institution that is sending students or having students come to them from the Detroit Promise. And the main, one of the main funders of that program is the Applebaum Foundation. And it's always a good idea to invite foundations to come to your campus, but it's even better when, um, one of the family members of the founder of the foundation attended. And that's what Reginald was able to, to procure for us. And I think that was probably four weeks ago now, Reginald. So, uh, please, if you see Reginald, congratulate him for, um, what we think is another, another potential grant coming from the Applebaum Foundation. The last thing I'll, I'll say to you all is that graduation's coming up. Please do communicate with Patty Foga's trustees about your plans for graduation. We have two ceremonies that we're really excited about. Holly Diamond and her team, I don't know if I see any other graduation teammates here. Joanie's, uh, President Morris, we'll call you Joanie in that instance. But, um, uh, we, we're, we're becoming a victim of our own success, trustees. I'll tell you, this is a really exciting thing, but we, we may be outgrowing the Dearborn Performing Arts Center. Good thing we're planning on being able to have an outdoor venue on this campus, um, which I won't steal the thunder of the building in sight.
You, you won't believe the plans we've got.
But, but the, but the graduation ceremony is the highlight of the day. It's, it's my favorite day of the year. But we are, we are busting at the seams and, um, I hope trustees are able to, to attend or, or watch it afterward.
Next item, please.
Next item, discussion items for proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, Board Report Number forty-seven thirty-seven, Vice President Zekowski.
Another year coming up, uh, more planning. Like I say, things, uh, on the Apple side as well as the plant side on the red line, if you need an update or recommend a project for twenty-four, twenty-five. Still a little, it is slightly down from last year, revenue and expense, because last year the state did give us four-point-two million dollars one time for various capital items. And that shows us revenue for this year, but it also showed up as an, you know, from transfer to the plant fund as an expenditure. So you'll see, the budgets are pretty, well, are pretty close, but that's a long time. Brian?
Thank you.
President Cavalluna, Chair Barry, trustees. My name is Brian Bame and I'm going to present, um, our proposed budget for fiscal twenty twenty-five. As John just mentioned, uh, in the middle here, our adjusted budget in twenty twenty-four looks kind of out of line in relation to our fiscal initial twenty twenty-four budget, where we had ninety-five, uh, almost ninety-six million dollars budgeted revenue and an excess revenue of two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. Our mid-year adjustment moved those numbers up and also increased our projected excess revenue to eight-hundred-ninety thousand. And for fiscal twenty-five, our proposed budget is, uh, revenue of a little over a hundred million dollars, um, and excess revenue of a little bit north of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. In terms of the revenue side of things, um, our bad debts were anticipated to go up slightly. Our state appropriation and our personal property tax reimbursement, we're looking at that going up five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. Our, our property taxes, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves this past fiscal year and so we actually have a, uh, an anticipated reduction in revenue, um, from what we budgeted last year. Our investment earnings are, are going up about a little over a million dollars, um, which reflects interest rate increases over the last couple of years. Our, our enrollment this year was actually up about three percent over budget and we've, uh, we've baked that into our baseline for next year. There's not an increase in enrollment, uh, but it's on the new higher enrollment that we've gotten to this year. So, um, the enrollment increase was about a little over a million dollars. And there isn't anything in terms of an enrollment change based on, on moving to that new, new threshold. And then we have a tuition increase of about one-point-seven million dollars, getting us to the total revenue increase of four-point-one million dollars. On the, on the expenditure side.
Before you go further, Brian, I want to just add one thing to that prior slide. And that is, uh, we're, Brian is showing the enrollment and the increase in change in mix of a million one-sixty. We are looking at setting the enrollment to what it actually happened this year, but our goal, and I didn't budget it, but our goal is to have a one percent increase in, uh, in enrollment. Holly, I just want to let you know that we're talking one percent.
You're not off the hook.
Only time I will say I'm a conservative is when we're looking at revenue. So we could have gone with one percent increase, but we held back on it just, just to be safe.
On the expenditure side, contractual increases in that, that is across all, um, employee groups, uh, that increases two-point-four million dollars. And then fringe of benefit increases associated with that is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We've got some retirements that come off of that, four-hundred-and-forty thousand. And then we, we added some positions of almost four-hundred thousand dollars. The increase in mandatory transfers, we, we have been putting away eight-hundred thousand dollars a year for quite some time. And for, uh, the energy project, for, uh, the tech building. And now we're moving that from eight-hundred thousand to two million dollars. So that's, you know, part of the, the, uh, large increase is towards the new building. And then we have some, uh, increases related to utilities, uh, data processing, and just some other decreases across the board that resulted in a four-point-one doll, four-point-one million dollar, uh, increase in expenditures. And we have some carryover initiatives in the next year, um, that, that have been on the books for a while. And so those, besides things that we're doing as it relates to the new building, that's not on here. But in terms of carryover initiatives, these are the ones that we have for, uh, next year. And then this is a comparison of Henry Ford to, um, the state as a whole, McComb, Wayne, Schoolcraft, Oakland and Washington, uh, in terms of, uh, the red is state appropriations, uh, the purple is property taxes and tuition and fees is the orange. We always show this and it's just a way that we, we, we know that we are, um, property tax core, um, in our, in our district, um, compared to some of the other schools. And so, um, our tuition and fees is a higher percentage, um, of the revenue that, that we, um, that we are required to, to meet, uh, meet our expenditures. And, um, uh, and yet at the same time, our, our tuition and fees are really not any different than the state as a whole, um, and, and some of our competitors also.
Keep in mind, there's one major difference in our tuition. Our tuition is a bigger proportion of our budget, but we are the only institution in the state that has a majority of our students coming from out of districts. So the higher out-of-district rate will bring in more tuition versus, uh, for example, Wayne, uh, Wayne, which is actually eighty-five percent in district, fifteen percent out-of-district, where we're forty percent in district, sixty percent out-of-district. So the disparity in dollars, basically, we have lower rates, but disparity is that the out-of-district mix is much higher than all the other twenty-six community colleges.
Obviously, the one thing that we have that, that most other, uh, community colleges have is a draw to, uh, the surrounding communities, um, that, that you don't see with Wayne and you don't see generally with, with Oakland. And then, uh, this is just a recap of, of the first slide. Again, the twenty twenty-five proposed budget is a hundred million, one-hundred thousand and reflecting an excess revenue of about quarter million dollars. And with that, I'll take any questions at you.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah, on slide three, um, I'm interested in knowing why there is a decrease in the property tax adjustment. Obviously, we're still levying the same amount of. Obviously, we're still levying the same amount of bills and the property values are going...
The revenue side.
Going up, but we have a decrease.
I think what happened was maybe, I'm thinking, a couple of years ago, we had projected maybe 3% or 4% increase. And what happened from one year to the next is they were pretty close. There was not much of an increase. And, you know, by the time that happened, we had already budgeted for the following year. And we actually did, I think in the mid-year, reduce our property taxes just based on, we had projected something based on the information that we had that was further along than we should have.
And Trustee Mosib's question is one of the questions I had. I think when you finally get your final numbers, you're going to be pleasantly surprised because in my line of work, what I'm seeing is going the other way around.
No, no, I...
For sure, for sure.
I think we had a kind of, almost like a 6% increase from one year to the next and it wasn't. And when we got to that point, we had already budgeted...
Sure, sure.
This year, and so that's why...
What I'm seeing, what I've seen the last 18 months, it's just the other way.
Well, the reality and the assumptions are...
Oh yeah, no, no, I understand. I'm just saying...
Yes, with, obviously, with the headly and the CPI being significantly higher, you know, the SEVs are going to be, what they're actually paying on, they'll be going up fairly significantly.
Sure. Trustee Thorpe.
On slide four, we're going over the expenditures. We've got an increase in there related to the utilities, but I would have expected utility costs to possibly drop due to the energy plan.
That's, as I mentioned to President Cavallone today, we're going to fall through this. It's a rate differential. Our usage is significantly down both electricity-wise and gas usage-wise. That is because rates are up. And if rates had stayed the same, you'd see a significant negative number up there if rates hadn't changed.
So is that another way of saying, even though we're using a lot less energy, they have increased the price so much that it's still an increase in the line item?
Yeah, I think last year's budget, we had reduced that line item something like $400,000.
And I think people are seeing that out in the community as well as people try to tighten their belts with water consumption and all the... Well, the rates kept going up, so they weren't seeing a difference in the bill itself. And they were getting very, I was hearing a lot of commentary from residents through neighborhood associations that, "I don't understand, I'm using less, why am I still paying the same amount?" So everybody's adjusting, knowing that they're, to continue to maintain that revenue. So you're kind of damned if you do and damned if you don't.
Brian, back to the revenue slide. Increase in bad debt, $55,000. I know it's...
That's just, that, basically, as the overall revenue increases, it's just a kind of a percentage of, so it's kind of an increase on the increase in overall revenue, tuition and fees.
As tuition fees go up, as we're showing here, there's going to be a...
It's going to be an increase, yeah. I'm sure we still have the checks and balances there because...
It's not, it has nothing to do with...
I was trying to relax the students earlier. I'm feeling a little anxiety now, going back 12, 13 years ago. It's like, whoa, okay, good, good. Thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Action items. Citizen participation. Steve Glazer would like to come to speak to the board about the HFC permanent collection.
Not many people realize, and I pointed out to the students every semester, just about every class, that all the framed pieces on the walls around campus of artwork are part of the HFC appropriate collection, stuff that was purchased, I think in the '60s through early '80s when it was legal to do that type of thing out as a portion of the student fees. But I really wanted to bring it to attention because in this building, we have three pieces by Kathy Colowens. And two of them are restrikes. What that means is that they were done, they are both etchings, and they were done posthumanously. An etching is when an artist coats a metal plate, then scratches through the coating, and then treats it, and then inks it, and puts it through a press, and then to get a print. And then the artist does it again. These are all hand-done. So the restrikes are ones that were done posthumanously. We actually have three of these upstairs, two restrikes, and then an original signed, pencil-signed Kathy Colowens piece in this building. This that I gave you is a review of an exhibition at the Museum of Modern Art in New York that is on display right now of Kathy Colowens's work. And so it's like the stuff that you see around campus, some of it is by major artists, and just wanted to bring that to attention because I don't know how many people even realize that we have this stuff on our campus. And when I saw this, it's like I was in class and just like I have nothing to do, I'll bring up the New York Times, and, because I print stuff out and pass it around to, or send it out to the faculty in the arts, and saw this, I thought, just immediately took students out to the hall upstairs, said, "Look at these three." This is in the New York Times right now. So be aware of the stuff as you walk around campus, through the buildings, the framed stuff on the wall is all part of the permanent collection. Some of it is quite valuable. Some of it are restrikes of stuff that was done prior to the 20th century. A few pieces are original of the ones done prior to the 20th century. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, are there any action items on this agenda which board members or president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we will exclude them from the motion below. Recommended action, move to approve action items one through five as recommended in this agenda.
So move.
Support.
Motion moved by Trustee Petrov, supported by Trustee Thorpe. Are there any questions? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing non-pleas, attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees' business, acknowledgements, correspondence.
I believe we all received a letter from Dr. Rader.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Next, board committee reports.
Sure.
Mr. Mosib.
I'll start with policy. Policy, we met before this meeting, and we went over some minor changes in degrees, policy, intercollegiate athletics policy, as well as the borrowing policy. And we went into a lengthy discussion on the purchasing policy with the revised approval levels. We did get some feedback from the entire board that we are going to further discuss also in our next meeting. We also reviewed the process in which board trustees will be signing off on the annual disclosure process. And that does not need board approval, it was just a review.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Any other reports?
Building in sight, for the first time in a long time here on this campus, only because somebody's very anxious to get a shovel in the ground now that the subject of finances has been resolved. What we basically went over first off was a timeline of how this is going to progress and what we can anticipate. And then I'm going to put a question to my fellow board members as to how they would like to be included in the conversation. Right now, there is a request for proposals for the architect firm that will be moving forward. From what I have seen, that was sent to us, there was quite a good response from a number of firms. There's a lot of moving parts to what these architects are going to be asked of, and so we have to make sure that we get this right the first go-round because this is the most important first step of proceeding with all of the changes on campus that everybody is going to see. We also had conversations about how we were going to keep everyone informed and up-to-date about this timeline. We know that there's a lot of employees on campus who are wondering about how they will be impacted, considering we have so many buildings involved at one level or another, from the welcome center to the demoing of buildings and movement of people and how we're going to keep campus open and accessible to everyone during all this process. So we had a lot of conversation about how we would communicate with everyone as we were moving forward with progress. So you will probably be seeing a variety of, and hopefully Ms. DeLonge will be handling the majority of, you know, a website and maybe even campus signage, alerting people and emails and whatever it takes to make sure that everybody has a good sense of what's going to be occurring throughout this whole process. None of this is, we're not going to be opening the doors come September. So this is going to be a little bit of a time process involved. The other question I have for the trustees is, we, the building site committee is going to be meeting again in June to go over what, where we're at with the RFPs for the architects before the final decision is made, so that if we have any questions, concerns, want to have eyes on the plan for this first phase of design, because it's important that we all are, feel we have input. I ask of the board members how you would like to be kept informed, because not everything is going to be as needed for the full board's input at this point in time. We're going to rely upon the expertise of our administration in a lot of the selection process in the beginning before any plans are finalized. But I want to make sure that everybody, if they have any questions about the hiring processes or how we're vetting any of the decisions being made, do you want to be included by email, that I send along whatever plans are sent to us, or just a summary after we meet in June about where they're at? Because by then, they'll be ready to select an architect firm at that point. So I'm just asking everyone how they want to be included in the conversation.
I will open up to everybody, but I believe what you just said, just a summary, as soon as, as soon as this changes, just shoot us an email with a summary. Anybody else have any thoughts?
I'm good with a summary.
Trustee Mosib.
Yeah, summary is fine, and if, regular updates after your meetings.
Yeah, and if you have any, you have any questions, reach out either to the chair or any other members. And I'll share this information with Trustee McDonald, too.
Okay. So, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. You all settled in?
If there isn't any other questions, I didn't want to get into too many other details right now.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Next item, please.
Request for information and future agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment on that?
Please.
The board asked for a report from the administration, I believe it was last meeting, regarding the number of students coming from each of the top 10 feeder high schools, and then some information regarding students who come from those schools needing support because they were not quite college-ready in the courses in which they wanted to enroll. And I've reported out to the board via email some of the answers to those questions, but the second question, the question about what used to be called developmental ed, was one that we should continue to think about as how I should respond to the request for information because that, in an email I sent to you all trustees, notes that, what you all will have recalled in possibly a previous report, is not the system we have now to help students who are not college-ready. So I'll be working with the chair about how to deal with that second question, but I just, I wanted to report out to you all that Holly Diamond, Michael Nealan, and Lori Gonko and their teams were helpful in giving me that information that I responded to you. That's all I have on the request for information.
Great, thank you.
Chair Barry, I forgot to include one thing that is important for everybody to hear tonight.
That's a penalty.
When they are ready to deliver a determination of the architect they're going to hire, we do not have a July meeting here at the college, but we are anxious to get this progress moving as soon as possible. So we may bring this before the P-12 board. That's why I wanted to make sure everybody was going to have that opportunity to be kept updated up until that point because, and it will be a public meeting. The problem was, was that we also don't have a calendar yet for the P-12 meetings starting July either, so I can't say a date for when that meeting will be. And we generally do not like to do college business at a P-12 meeting, and we don't like to do P-12 business at a college meeting because the audience is different. But because this is time-sensitive, we felt it was important to move it forwards. I just want everybody here to know that we may be making this, the final vote for that particular piece of the puzzle at our July meeting, and of course, we'll make sure that everybody knows when that's going to happen, take place. But we don't even have a July meeting date yet for the P-12.
We will have a meeting date by our next meeting in May, so we'll announce it. Thank you for that. Next item, please.
Board member commentary.
Trustee Thorpe.
Two quick things. One thing I think happened since we last met was the collage concert, if that sounds right. The music students all did a great job as usual, so it was great to go to that one. And before we meet again, to the students, to the staff, good luck with finals.
President Cavallone.
You and I are playing in a basketball game in two nights, two afternoons. This young man who's the president of the student council, his name is Michelangelo, challenged us as employees of the college to play basketball against students. And I put out the call for teammates, and the chair here has taken up the call. So I think we've got 10 or 11, maybe 12 people.
Oh, good.
And I think, I think the students have something like 27.
Oh, they're going to be...
That doesn't sound fair.
Trade out a lot faster.
They're going to be coming in waves, that's...
They're coming out of retirement after 35 years.
That's, Glazer, are you going to come play?
Well, neither can the students, we've already heard.
You know, I don't know if you've met Angelo, but he's an interesting guy.
I met him, yeah. I went to a stop-by, I was in a full suit, they're probably wondering, "Who is this guy?" But I was at the basketball court, I did meet him, so...
My wife and kids and I were going through the grocery store this past weekend, and he walked up to me. He said, "You going to be ready?"
Well, I can share with you, I can share with you, I overheard a couple of comments that, you know, President Cavallone can play, he's the real deal. So that conversation was happening, so I'm looking forward to it.
I hid behind my nine-year-old, but he said, "Are you going to be ready?" So please come and cheer if you'd like, or bring, I don't know, ace bandages and water. It's 4:30 at our gymnasium right that way on Wednesday. And then the last thing I want to say is, I really appreciate how flexible and accommodating Patty Flogus and Reuben Brookley and campus safety, and I don't see any other facilities, folks here, but a lot of people put in a lot of work in when I said, Paul Manucci. Hey, wouldn't it be neat if we had the trustees meet for their board meeting in the assistant gallery? And that's about all I did. And it looks really, really nice, which is evidence that I didn't have anything to do with it. So thank you, Ms. Flogus, Mr. Manucci, Reuben, your team. So thank you, Ms. Flogus, Mr. Manucci, Ruben, your team. Is there anyone else, Patty, that I...
Nathan Floga, Dr. Solis.
Nathan Floga?
Yes, that's up events.
Okay.
And then Stephanie.
Thank you, thank you all for helping us. That's all the comments I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us. Great place.
Definitely a great place. Next item, please.
Can I just say, I just have one comment to... I want to thank Reginald Best for the breakfast that we all were invited to on Friday at the Henry to celebrate our scholarship students. And I will say that there was a lot of tears as the students spoke. It was moving and emotional and rewarding, because it's another example of why we're here, why we do what we do, and why it is so important to be able to provide for these students in such a variety of ways. But all the donors who have supported scholarships for all these years have given them the ability to continue on in their education in a very meaningful way, and the students that they selected to speak were quite moving in their storytelling, just as we've had students come before us here as well. So I want to thank you for offering that opportunity for us to connect and for the donors to connect with what they're doing.
Future meeting dates, Monday, May 13, 2024, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services Center in the Frank Francie Boardroom. Monday, May 20, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee meeting, 6:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services Conference Center in the Cabinet Conference Room. Monday, May 20, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.